And opened us up with the indication of pledge. Appreciate it.
Let us pray. Lord eternal God, we're about to begin this commission meeting. We do so with the awareness and without your divine presence here at the center of our gathering, and also within ourselves, our work will be empty. Grace us with your wisdom and your vision. Gift us, Lord, with holy humor and humility, so that not only this meeting, but all our lives may be a meeting place for your kingdom. We access through our Lord and Savior, Jesus Christ, who lives within you in the unity of the Holy Spirit now and forever. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First item on the agenda is approval of minutes from February 20th, 2018, regular scheduled board meeting. Gentlemen, is there any changes, corrections? Not, do I have a motion to approve?
Motion approved.
Second it. Got a motion to approve by Commissioner Fleming, second by Commissioner Sessions. Any discussion or any changes? Hear none, all in favor, say aye. Aye, all opposed, same sign. Moving on to the consent agenda, we got items two through seventeen. Do I have any that wish to be pulled for discussion? Hear none, I'll just make a note that on item sixteen, where it says September 30th, 2020, it was noted in the backup material that the date is actually September 30th, 2019, so that was just a typo. With that correction made, do I have a motion to approve two through seventeen?
Motion approved.
Second it. Got a motion to approve by Commissioner Richardson, second by Commissioner Fleming, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Moving on, staff reports. Greg Scott, Park and Rick.
I first wanted to share with the commission that I took the liberty of talking to the big guy upstairs and to ask him to slow down this growth of the grass so we could catch up some projects before we got in the mowing season. He's accommodated that this week, a little cooler weather, so I take full responsibility that it was my fault for getting colder, so just wanted to share that with you up front.
But the heat is here and coming.
Well, one thing's for sure, you got less grass to mow now.
A little bit, yes, yes.
After those nice astroturf fields been completed.
Exactly.
Cover up my garden?
Pardon?
You want to cover up my garden?
I would suggest that, yes.
Do you want to?
I'll be right there.
It's your fault.
All right, just want to share with you a few things. We've got baseball and softball registrations underway, actually they're finished up, the teams are starting to practice. We've got 380 kids participating in those programs right now. We've got some district and state and regional tournaments coming up in the summer, late spring, early summer. June 7th, we'll have our district tournament with baseball. We've got state nine and 11-year-olds, July 16th, and Southeast Regional Tournament, this is where we get teams from usually North, South Carolina, Virginia, Alabama sometimes, and several Florida teams also. So that'll be July 17th, and we'll give more information about that when we get a bit closer, but it's a big deal for us, remember, all about the economics of folks coming in and spending the money before they go back home. The grants we've been working on, I won't get into all the details with all the ones, but we finished up the one at Hardest Park, the basic grant at the playground with the shade covering, the playground extension. Rochelle Sportsplex, we have, by the end of the week, we will be finished with the ball fields, redoing some of the fencing on those, on the astroturf fields, and then the new playground is, will be finished, doing the port in place, they started today doing the port in place substance and for the handicap accessibility area, and then the mulch showed up today, so we'll be spreading that the next couple of days also. So by the end of the week, that should be complete also. The restrooms there are about 80% complete, so things are moving forward. We've still got a long ways to go on a lot of other grants, but we're excited about those improvements so far. Appreciate the help from Public Works and also from county maintenance on those projects. Certainly appreciate their help in helping us make this happen. The airport, we should start paving the apron expansion next week, and that's moving forward. We ran a little bit of clay area, had to go back and re-escalate some areas there, but anyway, we're making progress there. So working with the fair association to make that event a good one. So be glad to answer any questions that y'all have got. Thank you very much.
Thanks, sir.
Yes, sir.
All right, moving on to general business, number 19, discuss TDC council recommendation for county commission to update their website to be more user-friendly. So Dr. Jackson's making his way to the podium. I asked him for this recommendation after we had a lengthy discussion about it with all the money we're putting into the TDC website. A lot of people are going to be coming to our website en route to that one, so I'll let Dr. Jackson take it from there.
Once again, it is another great evening in beautiful Swanee County. We are definitely, Mr. Harris, at the center of the universe. Just want to follow up on a discussion that in our last TDC meeting, as we're working on developing our tourist development destination website, there were actually concern from the board members that basically we're investing into this website, it's going to be state-of-the-art, it's going to be live, it's going to be updated.
There you go.
It's going to be updated. It's going to be updated on a continuous basis. Basically, the website will be used to market, proactively market Swanee County and its assets and its natural features throughout the year. Even the small, what I call local event grants that we give now to help with marketing, basically what's going to be occurring is that those events will not be marketed just six weeks out or four weeks out, actually, they will be marketed way out front and much greater reach. And so in putting this website together, basically, we're going to have videos, up-to-date videos, photos, a lot of good color, really presenting Swanee County in all its beauty that it is and the individuals that we have here, the people of Swanee County. So their concern was that, hey, you know, we're going to have this dynamic website, and the county's website is pretty stagnant. It doesn't have the look or the feel that we should have. And so what they wanted us to do is really bring it to you that you need to consider basically doing similar to the county's website. Basically, the commitment would be is that it has to be alive, has to be updated on a regular basis, you know, the events, we can, we would be able to share events, basically county commissioners, you all have other type events, that's none, TDC, ground breakings, all of those things need to be updated on as they happen. When I look at my economic development analytics, I can see basically where that stepping is, and for the most part, what folks do is they actually go to the county site first and hit the link for economic development. Normally, site selection consultants and CEOs that are very specific will go directly to my website, but if individuals are looking for information, they go to the county website. Just general information, population, some demographic information, they go to the county's website, and then they click over to the economic development. So you have the TDC that's developing a dynamic website, you have the Chamber that actually did a major update and overhaul of their website, so we think that the county needs to consider it. I mean, basically, when someone wants to know something about Swanee, and if they don't know about my site or the Chamber site, they always go to the county site.
Any thoughts from the board?
Everything's getting to where you go to the website for everything, so we need to have one that's pretty up-to-date and interactive.
Yeah, well, one of the things I wanted to start with, and I've already spoken with IT and Mr. Baker and Ms. Harris, and I wanted to bring it to y'all's attention, is maybe moving just the website portion of it out from under the clerk's office, under, to the county's office, and everything that, I checked with Mr. Baker's office to make sure that they didn't have any concerns with it, and because the website is hosted off-site in a...
Different server.
I can't speak to it correctly, but it's not hosted there at the courthouse, that there wouldn't be any issues with it, and I believe with the IT people that we have there at the administration office now, that we can kind of take that burden off of them, ask them to update it and keep it going every day. I think it would be prudent for us to have someone that, every morning, every afternoon, or whenever we need it, is making those updates.
Sure. They're in the office, they would know, so.
Do what?
I said, and that person is there in Public Works and would know everything we're doing.
Well, and Ms. Debbie, keep all the things updated on all the roads and things like that, you know?
That's right.
112th got graded this afternoon, you know, up to the minute.
I hadn't thought about that, but that sounded pretty good.
That's right.
Maybe a complaint line that goes right to our office?
I didn't say complaints, I was, I'm talking about her giving information.
I have a question.
She was giving information and updates.
I have a question on if it's going to the county website, that mean that it would go, that would work, TDC will work through the county website or through Dr. Jackson's?
It would, well, there's a quick link. Right now, there's a, I'm sorry, there's a quick link on the county website, it's currently being managed by the, under the clerk's office in IT, and this is a question of moving it into the county administration office so that adjustments can be made on a regular basis and updates, but there will be quick links on there, like Dr. Jackson said, even after the changes are made, the quick links will be there, so if they don't go directly to TDC or Chamber to economic development, they hit that quick link on the county's website and takes the...
Yeah, but I was trying to figure out where, you know, if it was going to be at his office or at administration, what you said with the quick link.
The county website then would be managed through the county administration office.
Right. Right now, anything that we're putting on the website is originating from the administration office, and then we're having to export it to the clerk's office and them to upload it.
And that's what I'm saying, it would be there.
So it's just going to cut out that step as they...
Correct.
...generate it in the office, it's going to be uploaded from in-office.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Jackson had, Dr. Jackson, excuse me, had referenced not just the content, but the look.
Yes.
If we're going to talk about a web redesign, we're going to talk about cost. If we're going to talk about cost, I'm not in favor of adding cost into the middle of the year, I'd rather talk about that during the budget time, but I would be interested in having someone manage the website so that at least what's there now, they can tweak it, they can add pages to it, add announcements to it, and then we can talk about design and those costs associated with that during the budget workshops, that's what I...
Well, tonight, I'm not asking for any design or remodel of the website, I was just wanting to maybe take that first step and to get it under the administrative office so that we could start maintaining it on a day-to-day basis, rather than just putting together information and having to export it out. That way, I mean, they can tweak it in-house now, and then we can discuss upgrades or redesign later, but it's just the first step that I wanted to get to. We discussed it at the TDC meeting, I told them I'd bring it up tonight.
The only thing that I would add right now, change right now, would be the pictures of the commissioners, not that I want my face any bigger, but that those pictures for the commissioners are so small, you can't blow them up at all, and so therefore, no one knows what we look like. If you blow them up big enough to see them, which is pixels.
That'd be a good thing.
I know, but, I mean...
That was by design.
Catherine's, if you want to see the big picture, Catherine has the big ones on her wall down there. Yeah, that's right. She provides darts.
Anyway, that's, I guess, all I was asking for tonight, the TDC...
I personally don't have a problem with that, I think it's the right step, it's the first step.
And I know, eventually, we do need to talk about revamping it and making it a little more user-friendly, but I guess I just need a motion to...
Make the motion.
Put the website...
Move forward.
...under the administrative office.
I'm making the motion.
All right, got a motion by Commissioner Sessions.
Second.
Move the county website from the clerk's office to county administration office for the day-to-day operations of it, and I got a second by Commissioner Richardson. Any further discussion? Hear none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. All right, item twenty, discuss possible board action, potential dates and agenda items for a workshop with the city of Live Oak. They got a, I believe they got a council meeting coming up next week, I was hoping we could go ahead and submit them some dates and a couple of topics that we wanted to talk about, so that they could hopefully pick one and approve it and send it back to us at their next board meeting, or council meeting. So anything over the next two months that works for you, don't work for you, speak up.
I just would say, please don't look for a Wednesday night, I'm on staff at church.
Anyway.
We know what Tuesdays look like, so...
Wasn't the original fourth, fifth, sixth, or the ninth, 10th, or 11th, something like that?
Say that again, I didn't hear you.
I like fifth.
Four, five, 10. 11 and 18.
18.
And that would be a morning meeting?
Whatever we want, we can make it morning, we can make it evening, it don't matter.
Mr. Chairman, I would recommend, for me, the evening, morning or evening of the fifth works, the mornings of either the Tuesday or the Wednesday, any of the Wednesdays.
So, I'm fine with morning or evening, and I'm fine with any of the dates other than fair week.
Oh, yeah.
What week is that?
I think that's the week of the 20th.
Yeah, the 18th is in that week.
Did you say the fifth was one of the options?
Mm-hmm.
Come on, April.
Come about in April.
Right here.
I'm wide open in April, so if anything works. I just want to make it very open, so I don't want to pin it down too much, because we had a meeting with them the other day, and they, with a little bit of talk about pushing the meeting back all the way into July, and I don't want to push it back that far, I want to have it as fast as we can.
You see, you have a facility in mind, or...
Well, I was going to talk about that, I mean, I don't know, the easiest place to do it, if you're going to have 12, at least 12 people sitting around the table, maybe at the Coliseum.
The fair has it all the way through April, I mean, through the first week of April.
10th, 11th, or 18th?
So the, sort of the week of the 9th, it gets opened up again.
10, or 11? 10, 11, or 18, if you use the fair.
Well, the 18th should be out there because of the fair.
When did you say that?
April or March?
Through...
Come about March, never mind, I'm sorry.
Yeah, through April 6th, they have it for that whole period of time. Now, they, I can check, matter of fact, while y'all are talking, I can text and find out if they'll be done, that, I would assume they'd be done by the Coliseum by that day, the 5th, but they do have reserves still.
Greg, I've got the third seat on our...
Of April?
Yeah.
I do not. Do the 18th?
We're down to one.
18, do the 18th? Nared it down.
Yeah, we did.
Well, we narrowed it down, but I don't want to send it to them with just one day, because they're going to...
You want to have multiple days, is that what you're looking for?
Yeah.
I got you.
Is there something going on the 19th as well, or are we, did we end on the 18th for a reason? So why don't we just move those days?
Well, I think the days you were speaking of were for this building, correct?
Okay.
So if we're going to move it to the Coliseum, it opens, he was just letting you know what days this building was open, I don't, it'd be hard to do it here, I don't want to have five of us sitting up here.
Yeah, I agree, I agree.
I'd rather have it where we're all...
I'd like to have it over there.
Yeah. We had it there before, when I, I think it was 2012, I think it was in Exhibition 2, we...
Why not the Depot Building, excuse me, Mr. Chairman?
Depot works, I just thought that, as much buzz as I hear, we might build the Coliseum up. I didn't want to run out of room.
So we can't get into after the 13th, is that what I'm hearing, the 6th? The 6th. So the 12th is an option?
I'm good with saying, when the fair's done with the Coliseum, pretty much let them pick a day from the, you said they're done with the 6th?
Right.
From the 9th to the 30th, I just opened that calendar that week, or that month, I mean.
Let them know.
If that works for y'all.
The only thing, like I said, the only thing I have a problem with is Wednesday evenings, that's it.
Well, then subtract Wednesday evenings off of it. Will that work? I mean, we're only going to pick one of those days.
Now, the 19th is when, that week of the 19th, that the bicycle group gets in there, so the 12th is your window.
Say that one more time?
The bicycle group comes in that following week of the 16th.
To the Coliseum?
Right. Actually, I know they'll be in there the 19th, that weekend, so if you're looking at Thursdays, the 12th, looks like you're... Should say the 12th is one option, the 18th could be another option?
No. How about this? Just the month of April, anybody that's got dates for the Coliseum, could y'all submit them to Mr. Harris's office, and then whatever's left, minus Wednesdays, can you just send that as their choices?
Sure.
We ain't got to hack it out all the night, I mean, sometime in the month of April would be nice to have it, the Coliseum, 9 o'clock or 6 o'clock, I don't care what time.
I'll get with Greg, and we'll just take off all the Wednesday evenings and the Tuesday nights that we're meeting.
That we're meeting, we're going to meet on a Tuesday, they're going to meet on a Tuesday.
Yeah.
CRA on Tuesday, Tuesdays are a bad night for everybody, because either council, commission, or CRA.
Yeah.
Just council.
So, I mean, by the time you get done with your calendar and everything else is done, it's not going to be but probably three or four dates that we're looking at anyway, so if y'all just work that out, that'll work for that month, and then as far as the agenda goes, what we got on there is basically what I was wanting to talk about, if y'all had anything y'all wanted to add. I didn't want to get into too lengthy of an agenda, I thought it needed to stem about, around the basic discussion that we had the other night, which was economic development, and I'll be honest, I met with Mr. Harris, myself, President Thomas, and Ron Williams met, it was yesterday, wasn't it? Yeah.
I guess it was.
Yeah.
Very early.
It seems like it was longer than I thought. We met yesterday, and I told them, as far as I was concerned, that the resolution that they passed, I didn't care if we discussed that or not, I thought the bigger issues were the wholesale purchase of utilities and the LDR situation that's going on, so I didn't want us to really get bogged down on the petty stuff, so if y'all are okay with that, then this is what we'll send to them and try to nail down a date with them.
Do you think the evening meeting, though, would be more beneficial to the public as far as...
I think it would.
Yeah, that's what I'm thinking, too.
I think it would, but, like I said, though, I don't really want to pin them down and say, this is what we're going to do, I'd rather just send them the calendar and say, y'all pick a day and time, here's where we want to do it, because I'm scared if we send, if we narrow it down too much, we're going to run into conflict and issues, not have a, be able to get it done.
Okay.
All right. You got any questions on that, Mr. Harris, or you got?
We have enough information to be dangerous, but we'll try to figure it out.
Close enough for government work, ain't it?
Yes, sir.
All right, moving on to item 21, discuss possible board action, any issues associated with the wastewater or the water plant at I-75136. Do you have anything, Ms. Harris?
I'll just tell you, just a brief update, we're out, going to be doing some surveying for the water treatment plant, we've got an advertised request for qualification for engineers that work on the water plant. Now, we're inviting them to respond to wastewater treatment plants, too, because we had a conversation about adding a wastewater treatment facility to the Catalis site and adding that to our capital improvement plan, so we're going to entertain responses on both of those with this advertised RFQ. That should be back in another three weeks or so, and then it'll come back to the board with the recommendation after those responses are scored, but that's really all we have right now, a lot of preliminary work and layout work being done with the sewer treatment plant.
Any questions? All right, thanks, sir. Moving on to item 22, additional agenda items, we did have four items that we needed to discuss that came up after we posted the agenda. Item number one was approval of task order with Art of Professional Services for design and permitting of a stormwater ditch located on 171st Drive. Mr. Harris?
Mr. Chairman, this task order is in the amount of $12,980, this is a budgeted item, the entire project is budgeted in your adopted budget, and it was a little bit late because we were negotiating the dollar amount of this task order.
Any questions?
I dare approve.
Second.
Got a motion to approve by Commissioner Richardson, second by Commissioner Fleming, any discussion? Hear none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Item number two is discuss possible board action, businesses center grant application by Precision Automotive and Muffler, Dr. Jackson presenting.
Yes, we received an application from an existing business, Precision Automotive, Auto and Muffler, and the way the points are laid out on this particular project, the capital investment is about $570,000. The facility that they will be locating in, about 17,000 square feet, they are looking at creating seven new positions, the average wage will be about $30,000 with benefit. They are in the city, city of Live Oak, and so this same application will be on the agenda next week. And so this total incentive amount came out to be $14,580 to be paid out in increments of...
of $2,082 a year. Any questions?
Just clarification. They're located here already, correct?
Yes, it's an existing business.
They're moving into a new facility?
Yes.
In Live Oak?
Yes, sir.
If Live Oak approves?
Well, basically, the incentive...
Have they already approved the permits?
No, they haven't.
My understanding was, is from conversations that we had in the past, there've been problems with repair shops, automotive repair shops that have been approved in, in the city of Live Oak, so.
I, I believe that they've worked through the, those issues, and basically, their construction documents was delivered to the city same day that they delivered the application. And so they can't be, basically, this is an incentive, and so we need to get this completed before any building permits.
Our, our requirement says that they have to have the application approved before they can pull any building permits or anything, so if they do get approval by the city, and they did that first, then they wouldn't be able to apply for this.
Correct. And, and same with the city.
Same, yeah.
And if you, and, and I'm not sure, Commissioner Richardson, basically, the city adopted the same incentive program as we. So basically, it's the same criteria and points. What changes is their milit rate, which gives them a, a little different value.
All right, any further, any other questions, Dr. Jackson?
Yes.
They have a motion to approve?
I make motion to approve.
Second?
Got a motion to approve by Commissioner Sessions, second by Commissioner Hale. Any further discussion? Hear none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. All right, hopefully, the city will follow suit, and they will be able to expand, open up, and have a successful business.
Seven new positions.
That's good.
All right, number three, approval of change order with Anderson Columbia for the removal of unsuitable soils on 29th Road, budget impact funded by DOT. Mr. Harris?
Mr. Chairman, commissioners, we've been working through our consultant, North Florida Professional Services, and communicating with DOT, we need for additional funding, cover the cost of these unsuitable soils being removed, and we anticipate that we will have the paperwork completed with DOT and need authorization to go ahead and enter into a change order with contractors and contractor Anderson Columbia so they can continue to proceed on the project. Probably this will all come together tomorrow, but we couldn't stop and wait another two weeks for another board meeting because they're out, actually out there with the equipment working daily, so we need that approval.
Any questions? Y'all was out there yesterday, there, it seemed like they were getting a lot done.
Yeah.
I know we need to slow them up for the next two weeks, so we have a motion to approve?
I make motion to approve.
Got a motion to approve by Commissioner Sessions, second by Commissioner Richardson. Last chance for discussion. Hear none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign, all right. Moving on, item number four, approval of change order with North Florida Professional Servi, wait, is that North Florida or just Professional Services Group?
This is Professional Services Group LLC.
Okay. For work associated with 27th Drive Concrete Headwall Culvert Bridge, budget impact, possible reimbursement from FEMA. Mr. Harris?
This is a project the board already approved, the bid was awarded previously. Interestingly, I'm just gonna point this out, because it truly is interesting.
What?
The low bid on this project, when it was bid, was, I think, $29,882, or $988. What's really interesting is the, the high bid was over $500,000. In fact, the next lowest bid was $128,592. In any event, I had communicated with the contractor about the project, they finally got up here to get started. What has occurred since then is a lot of rain. So there's a big pond next to this culvert bridge, culverts are in, concrete needs to be poured, we had to come up with a different game plan. Instead of a, just a vertical head wall on each side, we're gonna do a mitered head wall at an angle, put riprap at the bottom, which will work fine, but in addition to that, we added guard rail to both sides of this, and the increase is $17,500. So the total price for the project would be $47,488.32, and I'm asking for board approval on a change order in the amount of $17,500.
Any questions for Mr. Harris?
Mr. Harris, I assume we've already put in the application for FEMA or for FEMA reimbursement?
They started looking at this quite some time back. In fact, Mr. Pittman, I think you were there with them, weren't you? But we've been working with FEMA on this, and we, we do anticipate reimbursement on this project.
Any other question?
Changing the original applications, not gonna affect FEMA? That's... Know how they are up there.
We approve. Second?
Was it? Motion to approve by Commissioner Richardson, second by Commissioner Fleming?
Yes, sir.
Any further discussion? Hear none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Moving on to item 23, public's concerns and comments. Anyone wishing to speak, if they would make their way to the podium, name, address for the record. Hear none, we'll move on to item 24, administrators' comments and information. Do you have anything else for us, Mr. Harris?
I just wanna thank Mr. Scott for praying that it would cool down. That's all I have.
Item 25, board memories, board members, board members' requests and comments, start with you, Michelle. Mr. Richardson? Mr. Fleming?
No, sir.
I don't have really anything either, other than I weighed a hog today, and it's about 40 pounds light, making it to the fair, so if anybody's got any secrets on getting one to fatten up, see me in the parking lot.
Some corn and water.
Other than that, I don't have anything. Thank y'all for coming out tonight, I just need a motion to adjourn.
Motion adjourned. Second?
Thank you.